This meeting of the Onslow County Board of Education will come to order. Thank you so much for us having a full house this evening. I hope that you enjoy the time that we're here together. We'd like to ask Reverend Bill Pollak of the First Christian Church in Richlands to come forward and he will deliver our invocation.
Will you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of another day and for the gift of this evening that brings us together to honor and to recognize and to plan and pursue all the great dreams of our students here in Onslow County. I thank you for this Board of Education. I thank you for every educator, every student, and every family that is represented here this night and throughout our county. We ask your blessings. We need you now more than ever and so we come to you and ask that you would visit this place, guide our discussions, be in our decisions, and in everything we do, we will seek to please you and to give you praise. We thank you this night for our nation and we ask that you would continue to be with our leaders and grant them your wisdom. We thank you for our military, for our first responders, and all that they mean to us in these days. And so in the gift of this night, we remember the gift of this season. We pray that your son, Jesus, would be here and pleased with our gathering this night and we will give you thanks and praise in his name now and always. Amen.
Thank you Reverend. Will you rise and face the flag and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First business item on the agenda is to approve the agenda, so I entertain a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve.
Motion and second, a discussion, comments. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next is approval of the consent agenda. You see several items under there. You've had a chance to look at those earlier.
Motion to approve.
Okay, and the second, any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Now for the good news spotlight. It looks like we have a full audience for that tonight, which we're blessed that you are here. And first for the good news spotlight, I'd like to call up Brittany Norman, our Military Transition Counselor, and Camp Lejeune School Liaisons Donna Grady and Julie Fulton.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, executive staff, good evening. Gosh, it's so good to see everybody in here. Even though it's December, I wanted to take a moment to recognize the month of November as it is a very special month for our military members and their families. In 1996, the month of November was recognized by the Armed Services as Military Family Appreciation Month. Each November, the President of the United States signs a proclamation declaring Military Family Appreciation Month to acknowledge the daily sacrifices made by military families and the service members with service members that are currently deployed. We also celebrate Veterans Day during the month of November to acknowledge and show appreciation to our veterans, both past and present, for their brave service to our nation. Tonight, I would like to highlight two of our high school student-to-student teams who have gone above and beyond to create a culture of kindness and a welcoming environment to new students, many of whom are military dependents themselves, proving that their schools are military friendly. But before I do that, I want to turn it over to our community partners, school liaisons, and a very special guest.
As she said, November is the month of the military family and I, as a school liaison, go out into the schools of Onslow County and work with our kids who have parents who are deployed. I have four schools that I work with and this month, our focus was on the flag, the United States flag. The Woodman of the World donated flags for individual kids and posters for the kids and we learned the etiquette and all about the United States flag. In light of all that for this month, this flag here was flown. It says, "This is to certify that the accompanying flag was flown over the United States Capitol on November 10th, 2017, at the request of the Honorable Richard Burr, United States Senator. This flag was flown for military students of Onslow County Schools in honor of the United States Marine Corps 242nd Birthday, signed by Stephen Ayers, the Architect of the Capitol." So I'd like to present this at this time to Brittany for Onslow County Schools.
Thank you.
I'm very excited to help to present the awards for our Military Friendly School of the Year for this year and as you probably have guessed, this year, we had a tie. We agonized over this decision for quite a while, but there was just no way that we could differentiate between these two schools. So I would like to call up Swansboro High School and Jacksonville High School to receive Swansboro High School hosted an S2S summit that was attended by over 80 students in January of last year and they have been, I don't know, crazy enough, Mr. Maticola, to volunteer to do it again this January and we are so appreciative of their efforts that helped spread the best practices of the student-to-student teams throughout the county and even into Pender County and we had some from Carteret County attend as well. So thank you very much for your efforts. Jacksonville High School did an amazing job of creating a video to go on their website to welcome new students and we just really appreciate both the students and the advisors for your efforts on this. You can give it to both of them. Here you go, you want to give it to Swansboro? So to help us with our congratulations, I would like to introduce a very special guest and I know you all have heard the joke, what's red and white, what's black and white and red all over? Well, I'm going to tell you about student-to-student, our logo is purple and the reason that it's purple is because it represents all the colors of all the military services. So we are always talking about being a purple organization, which means we're a team and we accept everyone. So I'm here to introduce Colonel Thomas Bruno. He is the Chief of Staff for Marine Corps Installations East and Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune and he is khaki and green and purple all over as well. He doesn't even know this, but I did a little digging on his past and he was, his last assignment was to be a Marine instructor at the Air Force Air War College. His degree came from the Army War College and obviously, he is a Marine, so he understands what it means to be a member of a team. Please help me welcome Colonel Bruno.
Thank you. First off, hey, congratulations, everybody. Like she said, I'm Colonel Tom Bruno. Apparently, the Marine Corps has been trying to get rid of me for quite a while. I'll throw this at you. I'm here on behalf of General Offer. So he got here in August, he's a busy man, he couldn't make it here today, he sent me. He's lived over half of his career right here in North Carolina, as have I, so he knows the importance of why you guys are here tonight. He's all about training Marines and getting them ready to go out and fight battles and wars like you watch about on the news, but I will say this, he's all about taking care of them when they're here. So he takes care of them by training them, he takes care of them by supporting them and he takes care of them by supporting his families. Just like on base, any of the buildings or any of the stuff he does on base, this is just as important to him as coming out here and seeing schools that have the kids of his base interacting with the kids of the community and the support they get and the support you give. So he wanted to come, he sent me out here to say, first off, thanks to the students, thanks to all you do, thanks to the administrators, and thanks to the teachers. Much appreciated on behalf of the General Offer, like I said. Thanks a lot.
We'll take some pictures. They'll want you in there.
Can you get in the middle?
Sure.
Next, I would ask Brent Anderson to come forward with the, who is going to take the place of Kelly Knapp, who isn't with us this evening, she's with Community Prevention Services, but they, the purpose is to recognize the winners of the Red Ribbon Banner Contest. I know Kelly is sorry that she's not here because she's never missed one.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board, our audience tonight. Throughout the United States, the last full week of October has been designated as Red Ribbon Week. The Red Ribbon Campaign has become a symbol of support for the DEA's efforts to reduce demand for drugs through prevention and education programs. By wearing a red ribbon during the last week in October, Americans demonstrate their ardent opposition to drugs and drug usage. They pay homage to all the men and women who have made the ultimate sacrifice in support of our nation's struggle against drug trafficking and abuse. In the Onslow County school system, Red Ribbon Week is recognized in a number of different ways. One of the most popular is a contest sponsored by Community Prevention Services featuring student-created banners. The banners focus on creativity with students developing the concept and doing all of the work. There are a number of different categories which we will be recognizing tonight. We're going to begin with our best overall category and we've got three schools that we're going to recognize in that, we'll call them up each individually. And this year, instead of having them bring the banners and stretch them out, we took some pictures, so they're a little hard to see on the big screen, but they are all up here, so we've got our first category of students. We'd like to first bring up our students from Morton Elementary and their banner was the Hanging Key. And accepting on their behalf is Mr. Jerome Guidry, the principal. And finally, in our best overall category, our students from Jacksonville High and they were the, had the goofy Jamari Bonds, Jacksonville students. There you go, Ms. Gillette, the Assistant Principal of Jacksonville High School, accepting on their behalf this evening. Our next category is the most original and we're going to, again, put them up here on the board, so we've got some pictures of the banners that they had. We're going to start with our group from Northwoods Elementary, first grade, and there were fidget spinners. Oh, a word that brings fear to the hearts of parents. Now, Dr. Pollak, do you want to come up and accept on behalf as well? So not let Mr. Guidry have all the fun. Next, we have a group from Richlands Primary, the kindergarten class, Open the Door to Your Future. And finally, in our most original category, we have a group from Trexler Middle and it was Real Heroes. We have our Trexler Middle group, there we go. We're going to get a couple of elementary schools with our most creative. We'd like to recognize Richlands Elementary, fifth grade, for a Harry Potter Slytherin theme this year for theirs. And finally, in our most creative category, we have most creative with middle school is Newbridge Middle, Put the Stash in the Trash. Now, our final category for this evening is the Most Red Ribbons School Spirited Awards and this goes, one of them goes to Richlands Primary. They did a Sheriff Car, had five presentations, daily prizes, they had over 800 pledge sheets returned, 950 red ribbon items given out daily, 43 student classroom sign key banner, 10 drug-free announcements, a canned food drive, and daily anti-drug lessons. And our final Most Red Ribbon School Spirited Award goes to Morton Elementary. They had a canned food drive, school decorated throughout with red ribbons and an anti-drug theme, they decorated the outside of the school, had daily giveaways, and lots of other cool prizes. And that was all of the red ribbon recognitions for this and we really appreciate all the effort that our schools put into promoting Red Ribbon Week and the very positive message that that sends to our students and to our community. Now, we'd like to move to another recognition. I'm going to ask Dr. Lisa Peel to join me up here in the front. And tonight, we'd like to recognize and congratulate Dr. Lisa Peel, who is our Director of Cultural Arts and Special Projects. Dr. Peel was selected by the North Carolina Arts Education Association as the Arts Administrator of the Year for 2017-2018. These awards are presented to art educators to recognize and celebrate their commitment to art education. Dr. Peel was recognized during the awards presentation and reception at the NCAEA Annual Professional Development Conference in Wilmington on October 23rd, 29th, excuse me.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Greg Grantham, our Athletic PE Director, will make the next presentations and recognitions. You know, I knew him when he didn't have to wear those glasses.
That really wasn't that long ago. Madam Chair, members of the Board, the Stout, executive staff, it's always my honor and privilege to recognize our student athletes and our athletic teams. We had a very successful fall and we had a number of student athletes that were recognized as the Player of the Year in their respective fall sports. So we're going to recognize the athletes first. If all the student athletes will stay up here, we'll get a photograph and then we'll recognize the Coaches of the Year. So we're going to start in the Coastal 8, 1A, 2A Conference in girls tennis. Abby Corinick from Dixon High School was recognized as the Player of the Year in girls Also from Dixon High School, boys soccer, Harrison Martin was recognized as the Conference Also from Dixon High School in volleyball, Brittany Silence was the Volleyball Player And in football, from Southwest High School, Jacoby Johnson was recognized as the Conference Player of the Year. I'm sure he's faster than that on the football field. In the Coastal 3A Conference, the girls tennis Player of the Year was Ally Ingram from Jacksonville High School. And in boys soccer, from Swansboro High School, Cannon Toodle was recognized as the Player of the Year. We also had several of our coaches from our Onslow County schools that were recognized by their peers and voted on as Coaches of the Year in their respective conference. From Dixon High School, the Coastal 8, 1A, 2A Volleyball Coach of the Year was Heather And also from Dixon High School, the Boys Soccer Coach of the Year was Kevin Hart. And from Southwest High School, the Football Coach of the Year was Charlie Dempsey. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that not only did the Stallions win the conference championship, but they advanced all the way to the Eastern Regional Championship Game, so congratulations, Coach Dempsey. In the Coastal 3A Conference, the Boys Cross Country Coach of the Year was Mark Starlin from Swansboro High School. But as many of our coaches are, Coach Starlin is also a wrestling coach, so he's coaching at a wrestling match tonight, so he's not with us. The Boys Soccer Coach of the Year from Jacksonville High School in the 3A Conference Also from Jacksonville High School, the Girls Tennis Coach of the Year was Dave Fleischer. Congratulations. And one more Cardinal from Jacksonville High School, the Volleyball Coach of the Year was George Falter. And congratulations to all of our student athletes and coaches. Thank you.
You know, I like all this good news because I get to clap a lot and it'll make my Fitbit think that I've walked extra steps. Members of the Board, I know that you have a couple of items of good news you'd like to share, so we'll begin with Reverend Churchwell.
Yes, Madam Chair. On this morning, about 8:30, we were able to attend the Salute the Excellence Breakfast over at the Country Club and it was a fabulous event wherein the recognition of our Principal of the Year, Assistant Principal of the Year, Teacher of the Year, in those capacities and all the other educators that were recognized and it was quite a few, so it's just a testament to this district's ability to create and develop such an atmosphere to where we have quality and such professionalism. And also, in the absence of our Superintendent, he was taken away during that event, it showed the dexterity of our Deputy Director, Deputy Superintendent. She was able to just pick up his notes and close out the program so effortlessly, so again, it was just a wonderful event and a testimony to this district's ability to produce such, such great educators.
Thank you for those nice words. Mr. Tev?
Before I get into what I plan to announce, I want to follow up with Dr. Peel. If I'm not mistaken, last month, I believe, we recognized the Elementary Art Teacher of the Year and the secondary Art Teacher of the Year for North Carolina. So Onslow County took home all the hardware, I believe. Very good.
Yeah.
Well, that speaks volumes of your leadership and the quality program that we have in this county, evident along with the athletics and everything that we do and I thank you for that. Last month, I had the opportunity to attend the annual conference of the North Carolina School Board Association in Greensboro. It's an opportunity where school board members from across the state gather to participate in multiple breakout sessions where presenters share their success stories and strategies in supporting student achievement and other facets of the school system. I'm very proud to say that several staff members from Onslow County Schools were part of those breakout sessions. Dr. Peel, Director of Intercultural Initiatives, and Dr. Helen Rose, Principal at Swansboro Middle School, presented a session entitled, Connecting the Dots to Educating the Whole Child. The presentation focused on brain research and offering a wide array of learning and extracurricular activities at Swansboro Middle School. That was followed by another presentation from Onslow County staff members, Dr. Rose and Suzanne Long, who serves as Director of Global Initiatives, entitled, The Global Edge. Ms. Long and Dr. Rose shared "The Global Edge." Ms. Long and Dr. Gross shared with participants how the Onslow County Schools prepare students in global awareness and the understanding of diverse cultures. If you recall, early this year, Carolina Forest, or last year, Carolina Forest Elementary School was recognized as the first model-ready, global-ready school in North Carolina, and early this year, the Onslow County School District was recognized as the first model-global-ready district in the state of North Carolina. And that's something we're all very proud of, so I would like to commend Dr. Peel, Dr. Gross, and Ms. Long for taking time out of your busy schedules to, to present it at the annual conference because there were so many good things happening in Onslow County schools, and we just wanted to brag about it, but thank you for doing that. Part of the conference was, they include, have about three general sessions, and they invite guest speakers from around the country to, to come and speak to the, to the group. During the last general session, our very own Lisa Godwin, Onslow County Teacher of the Year, and the North Carolina Teacher of the Year, had a chance to be a guest speaker, and she was speaking about, and she travels throughout the, the country, speaking to business leaders, education civic leaders on the importance of public education. She gave a very moving presentation, very moving spirited speech, but after sharing experiences about her journey to become a teacher and her passion for making a difference in the lives of students, I don't believe there was a dry eye in that audience. I mean, you, you felt her passion, you felt her dedication, and I think everybody wanted to be another kindergarten student, but in her class. So, we all felt her passion. Madam Chair, I can tell you, the Onslow County Schools was well represented at the conference. I know this school board is very proud of our staff and all the great things that they do, and as well as the entire school system, so, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Wiggins?
As you can see by the coaches and the teams that we have seen tonight, it takes great teamwork for you to be successful. A part of our teamwork with our educational program in Onslow County to serve our students and our teachers is the support that we get from our businesses. We could not do that, we could not do what we do without our business support, their energies, their monies that they give to us. And I would like to thank Jones Onslow EMC for their continued support of our schools, our teachers, and our students. For 24 years now, Jones Onslow has sponsored the Educational Grant Program. This year, we attended a banquet last night. This year, they distributed over $74,000 to our schools, to 265 educators, 75 projects, and 50 eligible schools. All of those folks gathered last night and received their grants. I just can't say enough about their support. Jeff Clark, the CEO, and all of his staff, what they do for us in Onslow County, and I want to let the public to know that we thank them very much. Thank you.
There were over 250 RSVPs for last night's event, so it was a packed house, and we were very glad of that. I'd like to make a couple of, just share a couple of things with you. In addition to all the athletic events that we have across this county, we also have science fairs going on, chorus, orchestra, and band concerts. And of course, if you've been to any of the Christmas parades, you know that our people are performing, our students are marching in the band there on floats, and they're being actively involved in that. As well as, I think there will be an upcoming food drive that our students are very proud of, that they contribute to for our Christmas cheer, and without the support of the schools, Christmas cheer could not deliver the food and provide the food that is given. So, we appreciate that as well. Before I end this, I'd like to make sure that I announce that Mark Price, Commissioner Mark Price is here, and he is always supportive of our educational endeavors, and we appreciate you coming and sitting through our meetings, Mark. Thank you. If you're here just for the Good News Spotlight, and you'd like to take your leave, this would be a good time for you to leave. We welcome you to stay. I know that we'll be entertaining. Thank you.
So, I thought you were going to say Beth, Beth's speech, but it was he.
As the members of the audience are making their way out, I'll just point out that the next item on our agenda is our public comment session. We have had no one to sign up for that, so I will ask at this time that we move to the next item, which is our annual
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Stout. North Carolina General Statute 115(c)447 authorizes local boards of education to contract for an annual independent audit, subject to approval by the Secretary of the Local Government Commission. The board has an agreement with the independent audit firm, Anderson, Smith &amp; White, to perform the annual audits. The firm has conducted these audits in highly organized and professional manner during previous engagements. This firm has committed to continuing their audit plan to perform effective and timely audits while utilizing their considerable experience in North Carolina Public School Board audits. They've also committed to extending the existing agreement and maintaining their five-year fee commitment that matches the original agreement. This extension was previously approved by the board. The audited engagement letter is found in your packet, along with the contract proposal for the audit of the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2018, in the amount of $47,000. The contract audited counts provided in your packet is the standard contract form required by the North Carolina Local Government Commission. Upon approval by the board, the contract will be forwarded to the North Carolina Local Government Commission at the Office of the State Treasurer for final approval. The contract is recommended for approval by the board at this time, Madam Chair.
Do you have a motion to accept the contract? They have a motion and a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments?
Just one quick question. This is the fifth year of the contract at this point?
That's right.
So, next year, we'll be considering putting it out for bid?
That, that will be a consideration, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting this as, as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Mr. Holloman. No one has signed up to speak at the second public comment session, so at this time, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And I, and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Have a safe evening.